Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us for our December 14th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our December 14th Board of Education meeting. If you haven't attended a board meeting recently, we are back to holding in-person meetings here in the middle school multipurpose room, but given that we still must be mindful of State Department of Health requirements for social distancing, we are also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube live. Additionally, all attendees and participants are required by order of the governor to wear face masks. As you may recall, the district was chosen to be a site for two pop-up vaccine clinics for children's five to 11 run by the Westchester County Department of Health. The first two clinics were held in the Rye Middle School gym on November 18th and 19th, with second doses given on December 9th and 10th. In all, the county administered 649 doses. We've offered to host another pop-up clinic, but so far, we have not been able to get on the calendar for that as they are still hitting schools for the first time throughout the county. We will continue to try and we'll keep the community informed should we be chosen to host another clinic. As many of you know, the district finally received approval and guidance from the county's Department of Health and launched our Test to Stay program yesterday. So far, we've tested 23 students. More information about the program and a list of Q and A's are posted to the website, on the homepage, the COVID homepage, and the health services page on the district's website. So there are three places on the website, you got a pretty good shot of landing on the document. And we are updating the Q and A as we receive new information or we have to make some changes or pivots in the program. I did host two sessions, one last night and one this morning, for questions for parents. Not many attended, but we did answer a fair number of questions. We also, I participated in the Rye Middle School P.O. meeting today and answered some questions about Test to Stay there. So for example, one of the questions we were recently asked is if students who have been exposed to COVID in their home by a family member who resides there can use the Test to Stay program. So we did have lots of conversation with the Department of Health today and taking into account what they're seeing in cases in the county right now is that it's literally spreading almost instantaneously in homes where all family members are coming down with COVID. So the answer to that question is no, because complete isolation of family members in the same home is difficult to maintain and health experts consider it continuous exposure. That's the term the DOH was using. And so after receiving that advice from the county Department of Health, we have determined that exposure within a household will not qualify for an individual to participate in the Test to Stay program. So that's been updated on the information. And with every one of our quarantines, as some of you know from experience, you get a phone call from someone and they tell you all about the situation, the dates, and we added a whole component about Test to Stay with the details for parents in the latest round. Some of the folks here tonight have already made calls using the new script with all of that information. So we've also been asked, and this is not a change, but it's just a clarification, if a fully vaccinated individual needs to quarantine and/or test after exposure to a COVID-positive individual. So in terms of how the DOH identifies a fully vaccinated individual, that is someone who is two weeks past their second dose of the vaccine. So that's someone who is fully vaccinated in the eyes of the Department of Health and the CDC. So if you are not showing any symptoms and you're fully vaccinated, there's no requirement to quarantine and therefore no requirement to participate in Test to Stay. Certainly what we always advise families, talk to your medical professional and get advice from your medical professional, but there is no requirement to quarantine if fully vaccinated, meaning second dose, two weeks out. Until that two-week period, it's still not considered fully vaccinated, so an individual would be required to quarantine. So just a reminder that we have extended the deadline for tax payment for the second half school taxes after tax bills were late getting to residents because of staffing shortages at the U.S. Post Office. Payment has been extended to December 31st. We've communicated this information via local news media and lots of other venues, but we ask that everyone please share the news with family and friends and anyone you come upon who lives in Rye, just to let them know. And since our last, these numbers are going to be a little shocking, but you know, I always end with cases. So since our last Board of Education meeting on November 30th, we have had 41 cases of COVID. Thankfully, we're hearing from families that most have been asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic, and we hope that continues to be the case for all of our family members in the community and that they're healthy. Eighteen of those at Midland, nine at Rye Middle School, eight at Rye High School, four at Osborne, and two at Milton. Five of those cases resulted in a small number of quarantines. And a new development that we're seeing recently, as I mentioned earlier, is that entire families are being diagnosed with COVID within like a 48-hour period, hence the decision about Test to Stay. So the surge in cases appears to be occurring all over Westchester County and beyond. We're hopeful that as more students are fully vaccinated, we will see our number of required quarantines reduced. And as this is our one and only December board meeting, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very happy, very healthy holiday season and a happy 2022. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne. And I guess the only thing I would add to that is that outside of Test to Stay, we still have surveillance testing that is available at all of the buildings throughout the week on designated days. There's typically a reminder sent out. So individuals should continue to avail themselves to that.
Absolutely.
It's completely voluntary, but it's also very helpful in terms of...
It is, and we've actually seen an uptick in participation in the surveillance testing out in the buildings in the last few weeks since just before Thanksgiving, and it's continued straight through.
Great. Okay. So I think that brings us now to our first presentation and discussion, the Universal Screener and multi-tiered system of support. I'll turn it over to Dr. Murray.
Hi, good evening. So I'm going to be giving you an overview of the work that we're doing with our Universal Screener this year, which we just implemented this fall, and also talk about how it fits in to the larger work that we're doing around our multi-tiered system of support, or what we refer to as MTSS. And I'm joined here tonight by our elementary assistant principals Bianca McHale, Christina Menito, and Laura Capiello. And we also, later on in the presentation, will have Jo DiGiovanni, our middle school principal, and Kristi Orlando, assistant principal, as well as our high school interim principal Suzanne Short. So what you'll hear tonight are the multiple ways that we really are providing support for our students. And this directly connects to our work with our Rye commitment. As you see in the commitment to students, right in that first line there, it says, "We'll provide the necessary support for you to receive an education that helps you become socially responsible, caring citizens who think critically, communicate effectively, collaborate, incredibly solve problems in a diverse global environment." And right in the beginning of that sentence, you see that we have to provide support, and sometimes that support's going to look different for different students. So you'll hear about how we are providing support at multiple levels for students. So some of you might be familiar with what a universal screener is. If not, a universal screener is an assessment tool that allows schools to quickly gather information on how students are doing and what they're ready to learn and where to focus instruction. And schools will use these for many different reasons. One is that data from a universal screener will provide us with an overall understanding of the level of effectiveness of our program. Sometimes it will point to areas that we're doing really well in, and it will also point to possible areas for growth and areas for us to focus our professional development. In addition, it offers us another measure from where our students are academically and tells us what they're ready for next. It really is an instructional tool, and we do work with teachers on how to interpret that data and use it for instruction. This measure provides our district with a measure of growth over time, which is really a nice data point for us to have, to see if our students are making adequate growth from one benchmark period to the next. And just as I said before, it is an instructional tool, so we want the data in the hands of the teachers, so when they are making their groups in class, that it's well-supported and backed by evidence that this is what the students need. The universal screener we chose is the NWEA. It was selected last spring by a middle school committee. They researched kind of the biggest screeners on the market, and the reason NWEA was selected was because it is adaptive, meaning that when the student answers a question, if they get it correct, then the next question gets a little more difficult. If they get the question incorrect, the next question's a little bit easier. That way, it's providing a nice amount of challenge for each student and is really tailored to them. And it's also, the questions are not given by grade level, but every student really leads the questions as to what level they're presented with. It was piloted over the spring and over the summer as well with middle school students and the ones that attended our summer program. The NWEA is administered three times a year. We administered it in September. We're getting ready for our next administration in January. In September, it was first through eighth-grade students, and January, we are adding on our kindergarteners, so it'll be kindergarten through eighth grade. And then we'll also be administering it in the spring, in May. Each assessment is about 15 minutes long, and the elementary students take it in their classroom with their teacher, and the middle school students take it here in the MPR as a team. So what you're looking at right now is the data from the fall. These are the scores that our students achieved on reading. This is the percent of students scoring in the high average and high ranges on the NWEA. And what that means is that the high average range is between the 60th and the 80th percentile nationally, and the high range is between the 80th and the 99th percentile nationally. So you're looking at the percentage of students who scored above the 60th percentile. And as you can see, most of our grade levels, we had 75% or higher scored above the 60th And then now here's our data on mathematics. Again, the percent scoring in the high average or high range. And as you can see here, we have a few of our, some grade levels scoring above the 75% of our students scoring above the 60th percentile. And what this also is showing, as I said before, when you use a universal screener, it's really looking for areas for professional growth and development. And I think this district has focused a lot on literacy the past few years, and we're turning our attention towards math. We've made a lot of nice shifts in math at the elementary level. Some were kind of caught in COVID, and so we're still focusing on them, and this data supports that focus as well. Parents will have access to the NWEA data after our January assessment, so it'll be in the parent portal, so probably the beginning of February. And the reports are going to include something called a RIT score, which is just a unit measurement that NWEA uses. It's matched to a national percentile, so parents will get that as well. And because this is the second administration, they'll also get a growth score. So they'll be able to see, did your child make an effective amount of growth from the fall to the winter? And that's also matched to a national percentile rank. In addition, parents will also see how their child's doing in comparison to a district performance as well. And then you'll also get the June report too after we give that test. So we use a lot of assessments, like the NWEA, to drive our instruction, and the universal screener is a part of that. So I wanted to also talk a little bit about how we use that data within our multi-tiered system of support. So MTSS is a framework that focuses on differentiated instruction, and it's broken into three tiers. And the first tier I would describe just as good differentiated instruction. This is where you see between whole group and small group and one-to-one work in the classroom. And then that type of instruction works for most kids, but you're going to have a small percentage of students who need more targeted instruction, and that's where Tier Two comes into play. And that typically takes place outside of the classroom during AIS with a separate AIS teacher. It's in a small group. And there still might be a percentage of students who need what's called Tier Three, which is more intense instruction also outside of the classroom. So really think about the instruction that we give and how we differentiate it across all three of those tiers. And MTSS at the core is about identifying which interventions and programs will best meet the needs of students, and then closely monitoring them as they're going through the instruction to make sure that it's properly matched to their needs. This year, we're really working on strengthening our MTSS process across the district. We're doing that in multiple ways. One way is that we have a partnership with the Haskins Lab, and we're working with one of the consultants with that organization to provide us coaching on MTSS. So they're working directly with our MTSS teams at our schools and helping us think about the data on a student level. So if we have students, perhaps maybe they're getting that Tier Three intervention and they're still not moving, so this consultant will help look at what might need to shift in the instruction to see more progress. And they're also helping us look at the school level and at the district level of some changes that we can make within our own process that we have to make sure that kids are really moving in the right direction. As I explained, we are utilizing our universal screener, as well as additional assessments in this process. So we did put new assessments in, particularly in K-1 on phonological awareness and around phonics blending, that we also take into consideration when thinking about the type of instruction we're offering. And we also are kind of reinventing our MTSS teams, looking at who's on them, what kind of benchmarks and criteria have we put in place, and then, as I said, looking at the data at the student, school, and district level.
Tricia, if I could just interject. So we call them MTSS teams, but you may know them as child study teams, as instructional support teams, as RTI teams, as AIS teams. They've been called a lot of different things over the years and a lot of different places and without any kind of consistency. So we are consistently calling them MTSS teams now.
And then in addition, we've also put into place our after-school COVID relief programs for first through eighth grade. And initially, those students were identified by our spring data because that's what we had fully at the time. We had about 85 students participating, and then based on our fall data, we've taken another 20 in. So that program is fully up and running and very successful as I walk around and see all of the small group instruction taking place, which is really nice to see. Okay, now I'm going to hand it over to Bianca, Christina, and Laura to talk more specifically about what MTSS looks like at the elementary schools.
Okay, so as Tricia mentioned, Tier One, the assessments like the literacy and math and NWEA, the Teachers College running record, we have developmental reading assessments, math and focus unit chapter assessments, words their way spelling inventory, and new phonological and phonics assessments in K-1, 2. They're given three times a year, October, and then January and May. And in addition to this, teachers are always doing informal assessments in the classroom throughout the entire year. So during grade level meetings and PED opportunities, teachers take this, all the data points and analyze this, and they talk about student strengths as well as the areas that may need support. And they create, you know, Tier One intervention plans really for students who are just slightly below grade level, and this support is then given within the classroom. And they address these needs and then progress monitor and go back to check to see if the student is responding and making progress within the classroom. And that's Tier One.
So for Tier Two, when we see a student needs a bit more support, we then move into Tier Two. And typically, that comes from us meeting as an MTSS team in our building. And as a team, we evaluate all of the data points that we have on that child, so all of the assessments that Laura mentioned, including the NWEA report, and we identify what will be the need for this child on a Tier Two level of support. And so for example, if a student comes up to the team for reading, we look at two different main components. So we may look at word recognition, and we might build out a Tier Two plan that supports the student in decoding or different word study strategies. And some teachers are being trained in Orton-Gillingham, the reading program. We also have some AIS teachers being trained in PIF, which is also an Orton-Gillingham program, and that Orton-Gillingham approach provides consistency for that student's program. And if the student then needs more support that is not for word recognition, we move to language comprehension, which is like reading comprehension. And our AIS teachers there are using LLI, which is a level of literacy intervention. And this supports students in learning a variety of comprehension strategies to support their reading and understanding, such as inferential questions. Once a student is receiving Tier Two support and we have a plan in place, we are progress monitoring that every three weeks to check in and see if progress is being made and if the current program needs to be adjusted from there.
So for Tier Three, the only difference from Tier Two is before a child can move into a Tier Three, the MTSS team then again analyzes what was going on in a Tier Two program, what was working, what was not working, and if the intensity needs to change. So a Tier Three, you can change the program, you can change the frequency, amount of times you're seeing a student, you can change the grouping, so it could go from a two-to-one to a one-to-one. This is usually done with an AIS teacher outside of the classroom. It's progress monitor weekly, which is a great way to just see where the breakdown is and to figure out what the target instruction for that student is. We also use Orton-Gillingham program, so some teachers are still using recipe for reading, but we are moving all of our AIS teachers to PIF, which is preventing academic failure by the spring, so that we are all consistent in the program choice for Tier Three. As well as the support with the Haskin Lab, we have identified a few students in Tier Three where we're taking a deeper dive into that data collection across all of the assessments, NWEA, and everything else that the classroom teachers are doing throughout the year.
Thank you. Joan, Kristi, want to come up?
Mr. Orlando and I are going to go through the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three process for the middle school. We've created checklists for all of our teachers for all three tiers, so they have access to this to fill out and to provide information for us. Our Tier One primarily consists of interventions that take place within the classroom, so it's good teaching. It touches on academic, social, behavioral interventions. Some examples of this include test retakes, refocus redirection, simplifying directions, using a graphic organizer, differentiated instruction, communication with parents, flexible seating, student choice, conferencing, DBT Step A, which is dialectical behavior therapy, feedback from the team, we have a team model here, TC running records, and chunking activities. We talked about the NWEA, universal screener, this is three times a year. We receive feedback or read that data, and we look at the data with our data team, we review the scores, and we also meet with the teachers. We review and interpret the data to discuss the interventions in the classroom and how we can improve in different instruction for each one of our students. We've been pushing the idea this year that there is not one blanket lesson that fits all, and that we have to find ways to target individual students in the class with the data that which we have. We also talk in this tier about directed X-period and using X-period in a more beneficial way to target some of these things, and this would be for specific students. We have a homework club that runs Monday through Thursday that gets updated weekly by the teams, so if students need that support, they can also utilize that service, and teachers can get access to the information that they need to help support those students. So Mr. Orlando is going to talk a little bit about our Tier Two checklist.
Sure. So Tier Two is for students that need a little bit more frequency with their interventions. We also drafted last year our Tier Two checklist, which is basically a support for teachers to use during team meetings, and it outlines particular intervention strategies that they can try in the classroom. Tier Two specifically refers to mostly pull-out instruction or small group. And so some of the interventions that we have this year, we have a math lab for students in grade six to eight, we have literacy lab for students in seventh and eighth, and we have push-in and pull-out reading support. So we added a reading specialist to our team this year, and the reading specialist works, is part of our data team. She also has been meeting with students in small groups, assessing them using running records, which students are familiar with from elementary school, so it's a nice segue up to middle school. And we also are using LLI as the elementary assistant principal mentioned a moment ago. We have an ESS support, which is emotional service support and group counseling. We also have DBT Lite, so there are a group of students who are receiving particular pull-out instructions, and they're missing some of the DBT work that's being done in our habits of mind classes, and so we're running an after-school program to make sure that they're also receiving that emotional, social-emotional support as well. The idea with these is that students would eventually phase out of the tiers and need reduced support, and so we evaluate their progress every six to eight weeks. Our reading support specialist just conducted her second round of running records, and so that's kind of, that showed actually really excellent progress with how our students are doing that are being pulled out. And we're moving into now our January phase where we're really looking at the growth to inform where these students will stay, move, or shift.
Yeah, she was happy to report that all students showed growth from the elementary school into sixth grade in their reading scores. One thing too with our reading specialist that I didn't say for Tier One, she's also working with our ELA teachers, and we're starting to push into some other classes like social studies to help support these students that need some extra, that may need some help with specific skills from what we're getting from the NWEA. Our last tier is Tier Three, and Tier Three is obviously a higher frequency. It can consider, it could be individual or small group pull-out instruction, and that would be in reading, ELA, and math after school, so Dr. Murray was talking about our COVID relief program. We've identified students to attend that program as well. Mr. Orlando just talked about our ESS and our counseling program. Our emotional support services have really been utilized this year for students who need the social-emotional support. And we also have a comprehensive DBT, which is two times a week. We've identified students who get extra support in this area that meet with our psychologists. So it could be twice a week, it could be individually or small group. And our last bullet for our Tier Three checklist is a referral to special education if need be.
Did we mention the ELA for school support?
Yes, we did.
All right, thank you. Suzanne?
All right. So I'll just go through our three tiers. It's very similar to the middle school, I guess. Do you turn on the lights?
Did it go away when they got up? Do you want them both on?
You're good. You're good.
All right. Sure. So it's very similar to the middle school. There are a few differences, mostly because we don't have a team approach and we don't use a screener. So we try to stick with the classroom strategies as a huge way of actually meeting the needs of most of our students, and we've spent the last couple of years working on rolling out some strategies for teachers to use.
You're good.
You're good.
All right. Sure. So it's very similar to the middle school. There are a few differences, mostly because we don't have a team approach and we don't use a screener. So we try to stick with the classroom strategies as a huge way of actually meeting the needs of most of our students. And we've spent the last couple of years working on rolling out some strategies for teachers to use across the board in terms of increasing modalities of learning and making assessments more genuine and meaningful in the classroom to get a better sense of when students are doing well and when they're struggling. We use marking period data, which is actually just failure lists. But it can also, if we run reports for seventy and below, that tells you some data too. The students who tend to need some of the additional supports and not get caught are the ones who hover in the middle. So we try to use that data because it's not as readily available as some of the other would be. Our counselors meet with every single student every single year. They have a checklist of things they go through for behavioral, social, academic, emotional supports across the board every year, all four years. And so a lot of our data comes from those meetings. And then we also have our MTSS team data analysis. Every week during our MTSS meetings, we use that risk report that's available through our SIS system, which is Power School. It's actually really helpful. It combines the use of attendance, which in high school is a huge indicator of students who are struggling both academically and socially and emotionally, and the use of grades. So if there are sudden drops in grades, it picks those up. If there are grades missing or failing grades, it combines those to give you a total index score. So we use that weekly. And anytime a student is on that list two weeks in a row, we pull that as an indicator of needing to look into it further. We also have X-period two days a week where students can go in and visit with their teachers to get some additional supports. We have our tutoring center, which is open all day for walk-ins for students who are struggling and just want some extra help. There is a certified teacher, there's actually three certified teachers, but two of them serve as TAs in math and science and English and social studies. And our NHS tutors also work through the tutoring center to provide additional support and they're in there every day during lunch sessions and after school. And then we also have a homework club that runs two days a week. The students are allowed to walk into it. And we also have a teacher referral form that goes out to the teachers every week that asks them to refer students if they're starting to miss assignments so that we reach out to the families and offer them the ability to come in and work in there. For Tier Two, we have the in-class or out-of-class pull-out supports. We are fortunate right now that we have some teachers in the building who are pushing into some other classes to offer supports to the teachers in those rooms when they're finding that some students are struggling or they need an additional pair of hands for group work. So we're using that, the time to try to pair teachers whenever possible. And we also use that as a pull-out model. We have our writing lab. So when students are struggling in writing in ELA, they can refer a student to the writing lab to work with one of the writing mentors who's assigned there each period of the day. And that's been highly effective. And they've been pairing this year to actually identify the students who might need some additional writing support. And sometimes the students are going there during their English classes to get that support. We have ESS, which has been doing some smaller group counseling sessions when it's appropriate to help support our students. They're doing mostly Tier Three, and we'll talk about that. And then we have group counseling sessions as well. When there's identified a group of students who are kind of struggling with something similar, we do pull them together for some sort of pull-out counseling sessions. We have a referral process in place for our MTSS committee. So the expectation is that the first point of outreach, obviously it's high school, is to the students. The second point of outreach is to parents before they come to any sort of formal support process for us, because a lot of those supports kind of fix everything you need. Once it gets to that point, if they're actually, if a teacher is referring a student to MTSS, we have a data collection tool that we send out that hits on every type of academic intervention, behavioral intervention that you could possibly need to collect more data. And then that information goes back to the MTSS committee. We analyze it together and use a protocol to go through all the different ways and ideas that people can provide supports to the students. And then for Tier Three, we assign students to the tutoring center. So that is our most restrictive and helpful support is to add students to an assigned additional support class where they go for, it can be something for executive functioning support, it can be directly academic, it can be anything ranging from basic academics to pretty significant struggles with organizing their work. We are doing individual counseling through ESS and through our counseling, as well as with our psychologists and social workers. We also have the DBT groups running this year, so they also meet twice a week. They have a, I think it's like 12 students who they're meeting with to work on specific targeted skills for things with which they are struggling. And then if those things aren't working, obviously as the last point of our intervention process, we would refer for testing through the committee on special education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions? It's a lot of information.
Just for our panelists, we may want you to help answer some of the questions.
Yes, correct.
So feel free to pop back up or, you know what, I'll put a microphone on the podium.
Tricia, in terms of a couple of the slides that you had shared earlier about the percentage above the 60 percent percentile, which I think you mentioned that was the national average. Do we have?
So the reason I chose this a greater, higher than the 60th percentile to present was because that is what New York State would consider proficient. So anything that's, anyone who's in the 60th percentile and above would most likely pass the New York State assessment.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to differentiate. I thought you had mentioned also that there is a high average of 80%.
Yes.
Do we have that, do we have sort of the statistics of how we're pacing against that high average versus the?
I don't have them here for this presentation, but I do have the information. Yep.
And do the parents get that? Like, do they get to see the data in that, in that form in terms of sliced and diced against the different cohorts or against, you know?
They'll get to see it against the grade level for the district.
Okay. But does it do like a benchmarking analysis against other, other school districts in Westchester or?
No, it doesn't do that, no.
So, thank you. I started laughing a little because it was just, there was so much information. Thank you to everyone who came up to also tell us about each of the different grade levels and, and all the work that's been done to date to especially start the process of the NWEA, which has been a great advancement, I think, for us as a school district to be able to do that kind of work and, and have that data available to us for all of that growth. And I think it was Mr. DiGiovanni that talked about how they, they were already starting to see some growth
Yes.
factors from elementary into, I might be mixing some of our data here, but, but I think
Fifth to sixth grade reading.
Yes, into the sixth grade, which, which is fantastic. And so I have a lot of like, you know, aspirational thoughts of how we can continue to look at this and see how kids are, you know, maybe, kids who maybe are at some point in one of the tiers, how they then maybe come back
And that's the idea.
Down to the lower tiers
Exactly.
Where they're higher functioning, they've gotten the support that they need and are able to, and build, skill building, and they're able to not be, have as much support because they can work on their own.
And then just building historical data on a student over time. It's so powerful to look at that longitudinal data over the years and cohorts, quite frankly, to see how they're doing.
Right. And I was struck to, you know, I think this is, while I think a lot of our assessment, internal assessments that we do, local assessments, like is what we really call them, have been very helpful for, for our instruction. I think I see this as, as being a huge leap forward to help develop our instructional strategies and approaches with, with kids from, you know, a very longitudinal standpoint.
Absolutely.
Would you say that's correct?
Absolutely. I think it all, it all starts with really careful assessment, putting the right assessments in place at the right times throughout the year. I think absolutely will drive every bit of instruction that would happen in the classroom. And also to your earlier point, yes, the goal, when, if a child has to go to Tier Two to get some additional support, the goal is that that is for, you know, a set period of time, six, eight weeks, and they got the support they need and they come out back to the Tier One.
And, you know, Tricia sort of just mentioned the, the assessment thing, and there was a lot of thought and planning that went into the assessment. So selecting the Hagerty and the, the other phonemic awareness assessments that we're using in the lower grades speak to exactly an issue that, that we've talked to our families about. We've talked to our, our families about struggles that kids have had with language-based learning disabilities. So we looked at assessments that would help us identify where we're falling short and where we can better support kids. We went out, we reached out to the experts, we identified the Haskins Lab, the premier research institution on language-based learning, language-based learning disabilities in this country, and they are guiding this work. And it is incredible to see the impact and the clarity as we work to refine our small group instruction, our AIS instruction. And I think Bianca mentioned that moving to PIF across the board, so that OG approach that, that the research is telling us is the right direction to go in, but not having mix and match AIS, having consistent, deliberate, multi-sensory OG approaches that support the kids best. So very, very thoughtful, deliberate planning and acting to get us to that place in response to our community and our kids' needs.
And then I just have one other.
Yeah.
Well, I have one very hopefully simple question. How often do the MTSS teams meet at the various grade levels? I heard, I know, I've heard a lot of like checking back in for progress.
Yeah. It's going to be different for
For each one? Sorry.
It's okay.
So the middle school meets once a week, every Friday.
Okay. Sorry. We should have just given you all a mic.
Oh my God, we can totally do that. There are enough, we'll spread them out. We also meet once a week and generally the, the structure is that we do check backs between a four and eight-week window to check on student interventions for exactly what you said about move them up, step them down, figure out where they want to go. And then generally speaking, there is enough time to do two deep dives with a full team, with the teachers there and get, get the resolution of where students would fall for interventions.
Great.
There's a good dissertation in this work that's happening at the middle school and the high school because this kind of MTSS targeted work is not happening in a lot of secondary schools around. So I know Suzanne and her team were looking at places to reach out to and, and talk to to learn from them. When somebody in the room over there goes back to graduate school and decides to do a dissertation, we've got a topic right here ready to be studied.
Absolutely.
Well, the problem is that in a lot of ways, Eric's right though, that, but when you go to reach out to other places, most high schools aren't implementing it. So we're, we're way farther than most places.
That's great.
Yep. And then elementary, you're once every six days.
Once every six days.
Okay. And then I'm going to pass it along because I have to organize my thoughts to see if I have any other specific questions. Does anybody else have questions or comments that they want to make or ask?
I had two questions. First of all, I appreciate this and I really like the comprehensive, integrative approach. It's wonderful. Just two clarification questions. In the past, did we have a universal screener for the elementary school and this is new for the middle school or is this a completely?
No, this is new in elementary and middle school.
Okay. Thank you. And then in terms of the timing, I think you said there's another assessment in January and parents will see the results in January, February, and will they see it for the September and January?
Good question. Yep. So when you get the parent report, it should be early February because I think our testing cycle ends the end of January, should be able to get them to pretty quickly. And you'll see the September performance as well. And you'll see the growth from September to January.
And then going forward, will parents get it after each testing?
Yep, you got it.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
With the longitudinal data on there, which is really nice to see.
Great. Thanks. Great.
Tricia, with, with the, with the report, what type of, or is there going to be, does the, does the program provide some sort of ability for parents to be able to interpret the data for themselves because the way we as a parent may see it may not be the intended purpose or need for the school and if you could speak to that a little?
Yeah, we were just saying we need the, we're going to have, need a parent webinar, I think, after these reports go out. Maybe a couple of them, just, just to make sure that parents have access to the information of how to interpret the data. Because there's a lot of data on there and we just want to make sure we're answering any questions that parents might have.
And also understanding the purpose of the data, right? To know that this is not, from what I'm hearing, it's not comparative data for me to be able to sit to say how my child did compared to their friend or how my sixth grader did compare to their eighth grader when they were in sixth grade and eighth grade. That that doesn't seem to be the real true purpose of this data set.
Correct.
The most critically important aspect of implementing a universal screener is to guide instruction, to be able to, we use that word differentiate a lot. I've used it a lot with many of you in conversations and we talk about it all the time with our staff. You need the right assessment information to be able to really be clear in your differentiation efforts. The purpose of this is not to sort, rank, compare, determine your kid's doing well enough in school. This is to help us inform what we're going to do with them on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday when they're in the room. And that's why it's so valuable and so important.
And to that end, we've spent a lot of time, and I, I have other things I want to say as well, so this is just, because it's all amazing. Like, I just can't, y'all know how I feel about data. This is like beyond. But for a student who a parent or even a student themselves would consider to, or even a teacher, kind of our middle-of-the-road student, right? They're not, they're not knocking, you know, home runs every day, but they're not hitting foul balls, you know? They're just a good study. How does a piece, how does this type of assessment help that child's progression in school?
The NWA supplies us with a lot of different reports and we're working pretty closely with teachers, very closely with teachers on how to interpret the reports. And what's nice is that it will list the, the child, for each student, will break up the strands of learning and will list skills that the child's ready to learn next. So even the child who's pretty solid, you know, not on either end of the spectrum but doing a really nice job every day, it's, it's still going to give skills that you could pull that child into a small group the next day and you could teach.
And does that apply, that's why I mean, like the kids
Even the, even the high students.
Right, so the kids are performing
All across the board.
Advantage, but it's still giving, here's where they could go or here's how you, all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Well, I have one question and I'm sure the answer is probably just, we don't have enough data sets to really answer it, but I'll answer the question anyways. If you look at the graphs on seven and eight, which I found really interesting, there's a lot of strong correlation. I mean, even the seventh and eighth graders literally have exactly the same percentage of the decimal for both math and reading, except for grade three and grade, what was the other one? I think grade five. Whereas grade three has the second highest reading, but then the lowest math with like a 14 percentage point difference between those. And grade five, not quite as dramatic, but also similar. Or just like, most of the grades are kind of lockstep math and, except for then grade three. I mean, is there anything we can glean from that or is it, look, we've taken one or two tests after a few years of data that it might be more meaningful?
I did notice that same pattern, that same discrepancy. And I do think it goes back to, we don't, I don't know if we have enough data yet. But I am also talking to the elementary principals about that to see if we have other data that supports it. Also looking at in-class room and the in-class math assessments to see if that is, to see if it's a match as well.
But there is an important point. So if we think back, this is year three of the Herculean effort to implement math and focus in the elementary schools. So if we think about, so year one was COVID part one. So we, we began the first implementation in the fall of 2019. So we had some hiccups in the spring with that. Year two was an interesting challenge in implementing. And year three, we're finally back to the regular school structure. So I honestly think that data set over time and seeing our, our PD efforts and Kerry's work with the teachers and back into classrooms regularly doing that work will, will I think have a tremendous impact and that the facility and comfort with the program and with the Singapore approach because it's not, it's not an uncomplicated approach to teaching mathematics. And there's a huge shift from where we were, which was not in any way consistent from room to room on the same grade, from grade to grade in the same building and forget across the district, so.
Coming my way. Anyone else?
So echoing the thanks, I have to say, I hear so many parents very excited about the NWA and the universal screener and the data. I know Jean is very excited, but there's many parents that are also very excited. So it clearly is so much work from the team, you know, around us. So just huge thanks to everybody. And the rollout seems very smooth as far as even just getting it into all the schools and setting up, you know, that first round of testing. It just, you know, you've done an excellent job in the rollout. So thank you to everyone for that. I would love to just hear a little bit more about, you know, the COVID relief programs and getting a sense of, we had the summer program, it sounds like it grew, you know, sort of about 100 students. And do we have some data that those kids, that they are progressing and that we're seeing, you know, it's very focused? those kids, that they are progressing and that we're seeing, you know, it's very focused, you know, tutoring and instruction to those students. So wondering if we have any sort of progress reports for those kids today?
For the ones in our current after school program or the ones from the summer?
Uh, well, is it the same, those 85 kind of came through?
It's not exactly the same group of students because we filled it with the ones who were recommended from the spring, but not everyone who was recommended in the spring went to the summer program. So it's not exactly the same cohort of students. We will be looking at that data. I'm pretty excited about, about January because we're going to have another round of NWA and we can look to see that growth. Because they have been doing last several weeks. They'll have a good chunk of instruction under their belts in that program. So we should be able to see some growth at that point.
Okay, great. So we'll see that in the next testing. And then, you know, I know, you know, it's been talked about COVID and Jane sort of touched on this, the idea of clearly there's been a lot of work to support those students that really fell behind. And then there's sort of maybe a student who really, you know, started off three years ago and they were, you know, really excelling and then COVID really kind of pushed them down to the middle. So it's, you've answered the question away, but I just wanted to circle back, you know, for the community as we think about this, the support that's going in, that really this differentiated learning, you know, that's, that's how we're tackling it for these students, that the teachers are being given these tools. And so that support is happening in the classroom setting. So even though they're not necessarily testing and getting invited into that COVID support through this additional data, that's where we are supporting those students. So I just want to.
Absolutely. And it's what we're focusing on for professional development at the elementary level this year is looking at how do you form, how do you use that data to form your small groups throughout the day. You also are, where we have a win period, which is a differentiated instruction period as well. So it's, it's happening during the regular classroom instruction time plus that win period to hit all those, the students who aren't necessarily below benchmark, but might need an additional little push.
And I would say also, we should not underestimate the, the importance of the MTSS teams that we heard about from the building administrators, because having that weekly check-in and that team that's converging every single week to talk about these very issues and the regular progress monitoring that's happening and the four to eight week check backs. It's, it's all systematic in terms of the process and you really are following up to make sure. And you've got a team of experts in, in looking at that data and talking about the strategies that we need to move forward with. So I think that, that chunk is really important because you, you can't differentiate well without the right information, without the right assessment information and the right tools and strategies for using that, that information. So that the team is supporting analyzing the data, identifying the approach and following up to make sure that it's happening or making course corrections when necessary or shifting the approach when necessary. So I think that's a critically important point.
That's amazing. And then would you say, would you imagine some of this granular information on students would come through in like a parent teacher conference with, for a child? So that's going to have an extra layer of data and just depth to talk about, okay, for your stu-, for your child, here's how you could support your child, or here's how we're supporting them. Is that?
Absolutely. That would, that would be the next step.
Yeah. Super. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One, one other question that came out of thinking, you know, the impact of COVID over the last couple of years. And the data sets that these are being compared to, are they being compared to, you know, third graders around the country right now? Or is it some sort of like standard over years? Or are there anything, you know, in terms of?
It's compared, compared to them right now. Within, that took the test at the same time. So the 2021.
And is that, within this, are, is, are we getting data? Or do they have data in terms of like, you know, has there nationwide been a drop? You know, so you're being compared to like, like a third grader cohort or a fifth grader, whatever grade, doesn't really matter, from two years ago versus what it would be this year? And, you know, and I don't know if there have been changes.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there has. They, they, you know, put, they re-standardized the data every, with every year. So I'm, I'm not sure if there was a drop with COVID. I just know that we're being compared to current students.
There were a couple of things that were said in the presentation and I don't want you all to not know, I want you to know that they were heard very excitedly. So the idea, Kristi, that you talked about, about the reading specialist being involved in content classes is huge and is really exciting. Because in that whole idea of, of the reading comprehension and needing to be in a social studies class, how you read a text in social studies is vastly different than how you read a literature book like Dear Mr. Henshaw in third grade. And the idea that that's the type of thinking that is being put behind the instructional opportunities for our students is really exciting.
It really is. So one thing I can add to that is Jo and I meet with a reading specialist weekly. And she's actually started to transition into the social studies classrooms to model some strategies. But one of the things we're really excited that she's been starting to work on are toolkits. So she's putting together resources for teachers to, like a, a database really of resources for teachers to use in different units of instruction when she's not there. So she'll offer to model, she'll offer to push in. It's, it's really fantastic. And when she told us this week that she reassessed all of the running records for the students and all of them increased multiple levels from when she started in September was.
Huge.
Huge. Yeah.
That's super. And Kristi, you said two words that just like always make me excited, which is data teams. And that you have them and you're using them and they're operating is just like, the, the transitions and the, and the growth that our students can make by taking these kind of deep dives with the multiple layers of assessment. The idea that at the elementary school that you all are looking at using assessments and intervention programs, not just for decoding, right, and teaching kids how to say the word, but then how to think about how to say, now I've said this word, what does this word mean within this context? That's at next level stuff that is just going to be so beneficial for so many kids. And it's just, it's not easy. And it's not typical. And it really is exciting things to hear about. And so I just, I know I bore you all with my geekiness about this, but this is just, this is, this is great stuff and I'm very excited. Thank you.
Jane, I know you love when we say, you know, baby steps, making progress.
No, that I know.
I would say this is, this is much bigger than a, a baby step. This is a monumental sort of yeti step that, that we've taken. We can, if the board had a chance to name a snowplow like the kids, I think you would probably name it the universal screen plow.
I might. Or data team. I mean, there's so many names I could give the snowplow. But I think, and so to that end, right, it's this idea that like this is transformative educational opportunities for our students. In thinking about how we as, as a system can ensure that this moment in time of, of how a student's performing now, where their interventions have been successful, how, how do you all start to think about, how do we transition this information from one year to the next year and ensuring that all of this great work and all this information about how our kids are, are doing can continue with them to allow continued growth and success? Well, and especially, I just to add onto that, especially in those bridge years. So from elementary to middle and then middle to high school.
Yep. Yes. We've talked about some sort of data repository to make sure that those things happen. So it gets to the classroom teachers every year at the elementary level and then is passed off to the middle school MTSS data team and then to the high school. So we're, we're figuring that part out. But it's, it's an important part that I think is going to be, make a big difference.
Well, it's good that it's also integrated with Power School. So that it's right there in the SIS that, that teachers can access through the grade levels.
It's a lot of collaboration, which is, you know.
A lot of collaboration with the Erin and Caitlin and the pilots last year and making sure that we have the technical, technical capabilities to, to make this happen. The middle school team that did the piloting out in the buildings. So it's a, a big step, good step.
It reminds me, and there's only maybe one person who's still on the board that might remember this. We had, there used to be a lot of discussion about closing feedback loops.
Yeah.
And this is very much, sounds to me like we are in that closing the feedback loop always and continuing to go back and assess and, and watch progress and then move the loop wherever it needs to be next. But that's a, a fantastic thing to, to know that we're able to do that now. Did you want to say anything?
No, I'm good. I'm going to just bask in the glow of Jane's geekness. She's covered everything really well. Going to let her run with it.
The last, the last point I will make, and this is where I get geeky, is just the, the skill development. And so I think back to our big board here on the wall. And the skill development that, that goes along with all of these strands of learning that occur for kids and happen at all of these different levels where you're supporting kids in multiple ways. And that helps them be more prepared people to go out into the world from Rye City School District.
I just want to comment to the building administrative teams for their efforts in making this happen, you know, transitioning from crazy COVID into this fall. But I think Tricia had her first implementation team meeting on her third day on the job in July, if I have it correct. Because you were setting it up before you were even here. And, and this is a, a huge project to, to bring to fruition in a short period of time from the, the pilot work last year. But kudos to the team and to Tricia.
They've done an outstanding job.
Making this happen.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will move to our hearing of the public non-agenda items. So we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. And as a reminder, the community may always submit written comments to the board at any time by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. So anyone who would like to make a comment can please come to the podium. Okay. So seeing no one approach, I will close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Tom Stein, seconded by Chris Repetto. And we'll take a, a small minute to go through each of the sections to see if there's any additional questions. So our first is consent agenda general. Then we have fiscal construction, which I think we typically like to pause just because of all of the construction that's going on. And we have had several moments throughout the fall that we've had a, a few items come up for change orders and, and allowance authorization. So I'll look to Gabby to give us a little background on, on what's on the current agenda.
Sure. So as the dust continues to settle around construction and all the work that's gone on over the summer and carried through the fall, I think I would be remiss to not mention some larger ones at Midland School. We've talked a lot about the firewall needing to be erected and the consequences of that. So there are two large change orders on there, which is really the reconstruction on the classroom side of what took place after the firewall had to be constructed. So there was the additional abatement for flooring and the replacement of flooring because although it, it is hard to imagine, but there were a lot of classrooms where flooring was not called out. But because we found ourselves in a situation with the firewall, we then had to go back into many of these spaces and do additional abatement and work around flooring. Additionally, there were rooms that were not called out to have sinks replaced for the very same reasons. If, if we didn't go in and touch the flooring, we weren't going into those spaces to do sinks. So it's a lot of the ripple effect of what you're seeing as a result of the firewall situation that we had. In Osborne, just to touch on some of the larger ones, we did come across some demolition of, and, and the rebuild of some interior walls that once we started opening up around where the library used to be and where the library is now relocated at the, at the front of the building. There were walls in there that were clearly unstable, not something that we expected to encounter, but something that once it came upon us, we did have to go back in and make the corrections for. In saying all of this, we are anticipating coming back to the board at, I guess, is the Ju-
January 11th.
Wishful thinking.
January 11th.
January 11th, which I believe is our first meeting back after the holiday, to come and do a comprehensive presentation around the finances for the capital bond.
Today.
Knowing that phase two, in terms of getting all of our paperwork in order and change orders in order, I think that's a good time to come back to the board and the community to provide that comprehensive look at the finances. How did we get here and where are we going and where are we? So in doing that, there will be also, what I would like to do is create a live document for change orders and allowances, because it's hard. Because even when I see them on attached to the board agenda, there's a lot of technical jargon on there that relates back to the plans, but it doesn't give you the quick, what does this mean and where in the building is this? Because I struggle with AS 101 myself. So creating a document that will then be attached in the section where change orders and allowances are being approved, that you can do that quick look and see, excuse me, and see where in the building it's located so that you get a better understanding of what that change order is about.
Great. Wonderful. Anyone else?
Okay.
And then I think just as a, as a point of, again.
Yep.
Summary about the bids for the.
Yes. So you will also see an item under fiscal construction officially rejecting the bids that were received with regard to what we're calling phase two A, which is the new additions for Midland and Osborne School. At this time, we're taking a pause to reevaluate the, the scope of that project as a result of the bids that we received. As much as they were very close in nature to each other in terms of the vendors that bid, we just feel that based on the budgeting that we had anticipated, feeling the results of COVID, the chain supply issues, the delays that we're having right now in completing phase two, we felt that this was just the prudent and fiscally responsible thing to do, to reject the bids, take a moment, see what the market does, see if we can get some of these supply chain issues, some time to work themselves out and go back out to market at a later point. We still have plenty of time to rebid, to be able to do construction with our original schedule of starting this summer. So it, it, there's no harm in just taking a minute to see if things level out of it.
And the reality is that the pricing was, I mean, it was almost double what it should be. So it just, it's not fiscally responsible to, and if you award, because I, I've had this conversation with folks, you, you can't award and then haggle it down and value engineer. Once you award a bid, you're responsible for that bid. So the contractor can hold you to the, the costs that are in that awarded bid. So it's just not a prudent decision for us to make. You know, we have to be very conservative and careful as we have in this entire process and in the planning process for the bond.
Jen had a follow-up question about that. In terms of the $80 million bond, is there a timeframe that we have to use the money by a certain time?
No. So although we have authorization from the public for 79.9 million, we are only borrowing as it's needed. So there is no, there was no borrowing to the tune of 79.9 million sitting in an account that expires at a particular time. We borrowed funding as it was. as it was needed to support the project to the extent in which we've used it. So at this time, we have not borrowed the full amount, and we will not unless we get to that point where we're utilizing those funds accordingly. So there is no expiration date on that authorization.
And you can't decide to do different projects with the money. It's not legal.
Okay, thank you.
But I think that's why it's so important, the moment you're at right now, to take the pause, because you need to be able to, again, this is, this is how I think typically we've always functioned as a school district, is to be very conservative and keeping an eye on the fiscal approach for whether it be operational budgets or for a capital project. Okay. Professional appointments? Questions?
No, I did have a question on the consent agenda fiscal.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I missed that one. Sorry.
What's that from?
Jumped right over it.
So it's just my first time seeing the, a budget transfer. So just trying to get a sense of, is this something that typically happens throughout the year? And then is this particular transfer to kind of count for one large expense? Or is it just kind of a variety of things that have accumulated? Just walking me through that process.
Okay. So we do smaller budget transfers. So let's start with, so the board is required to authorize transfers above $10,000. So that's why you're seeing this particular transfer come to the board before we act upon it. In saying that, we are not big fans of budget transfers at any time during the year. So we do ask our building-level administrators to be very thoughtful around their budgeting and how they're going to utilize funding to avoid such activity as budget transfers. In this particular instance, it is supporting a specific effort. Thanks to the generosity of the Milton PTO, we have an opportunity to do the classroom libraries. And what this budget transfer is doing is actually pooling supply money that was in the budget designated for this year to support the effort of those libraries. So in addition to, in specific line items have specific dollar amounts attached to them in their descriptions. So the items that are being purchased here fall in the supply category as opposed to the durable materials category as opposed to equipment. And I can get into that more as we talk about budgeting.
But the transfers, these are all lines within the Milton budget
Correct.
that were budgeted for Milton and are being used for Milton. And it enables us to accept and immediately use that classroom library donation from the PTO.
Because so much of this has to do with the line items themselves, like where it's budgeted.
Exactly. There are specific
Anytime you're, yeah.
Right. The state creates criteria with each type of number that's listed there and how that money is to be used.
Yeah. And Gabby's quite accurate when she says we don't do this very often, which is why before this got sent to Gabby, it was approached with me, and then she officially approached to Gabby. And, you know, there was a lot of conversation around it. So, you know, the team understands that we don't, we aren't in the transfer business. This is a unique situation and a great opportunity for the instructional program in the building.
It does. It's exciting for Milton. It makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
So I'm assuming nothing for professional appointments. Yes, okay. Classified appointments. Okay. So, and special education, sorry. All right. So then can I have a final vote to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? Seven, nothing. And then I just wanted to point out that as part of the consent agenda, we have established, as part of the consent agenda, a memorial scholarship fund was established in the name of Michael DeVito, who was a graduate from Rye High School in 2010. And it states that Michael had a remarkable spirit and passion for helping others. This scholarship will be awarded to a graduating senior who, like Michael, exhibits leadership and an exceptional and inspiring compassion for others. Applicants are asked to provide a brief statement describing how their actions demonstrate such caring and compassion toward others. So we're happy to get that established as of today. And then we do have a tenure appointment that it's a little off cycle, but it is part of our agenda tonight for Brianna Castaleo as a tenure for a English, English is another, English?
As a new language.
As a new language. The mask is getting to me. I have to drink some water. And then we also have, do we have anything else? Nope, that's it on the consent agenda to point out. But then we do have some information and discussion on policies. So I will turn that over to Jane Anderson, our policy committee chair.
All righty. So information discussion number two, policy 9259. This is just a second read. We've already gone through this policy once, so this is just our second approval. I'm assuming there are no questions or concerns raised. So we will go ahead and move this policy forward as approved with our second review. Bringing back forward two policies that we have
I mean, again, it's, it's just grammatical, but I think it does actually matter where it still says the certified athletic trainer, which I think we discussed last time that there could be more than one, and so it should be a certified athletic trainer on page two.
Yes, and
I think they're gonna approve it pending that change.
We can, because I think also the way it is written, it's to think of it as a category of a class, of a class of people, as opposed to thinking of it as an individual. So I think that's, that's part of the difference. But yes, we can go ahead and make a change. Going back to policy 2330, executive session, we've reviewed this a few times. It was asked to be reviewed with legal counsel again for the line where it says, "A board may only take action in executive session in accordance with the law." The question was, do we specify the laws? As counsel has advised us that no, we should not specify the laws because laws change. And as such, it is not in our best interest to specify the laws. So if there are any questions or concerns still related to this policy, please send them to me, and we will review them the next policy committee and then bring it forward for a second read. For 1440, complaints about school personnel, we discussed this policy last time. I did not get any written remarks from any board members. However, this was also reviewed and discussed again with our legal counsel, who does our educational policy review for us. And it was stated by our legal counsel in their opinion that there is no need to specify the exact steps that need to be taken. Policies are really about a 3,000-foot view, not a 300-foot view. And it's in the regulations where we make, where the administration actually makes the steps. If they see a policy needs such explicitness about how it should be implemented, that a regulation would be written to go along with the policy. At this point, we do not have a regulation. If at time, if at such time the administration does feel that they need to have one, that's something that the administration can review, can create, and then the board will just have an advisory look at it. So please take a look at this policy. If you have any questions, we can certainly bring it forward to the policy committee. Otherwise, we'll bring it forward as written for a second review at our next meeting. And that's all the policy for right now.
All right.
But we do have a policy committee meeting right before the holidays. So everybody should get ready for some holiday treats.
Are there ugly sweaters required at that policy meeting, Jane?
I was just gonna make my cookies, but maybe we could do ugly sweaters.
A short dress.
Vivek, do you have any ugly Christmas sweaters?
Yeah.
But it'll be here in policy next week.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jane.
You're always welcome.
And then do we have any communications to and from the board?
So just one report, we did have actually two traffic and pedestrian safety committee meetings that I haven't been able to highlight. But I actually was able to follow up with Dr. Byrne following the meetings, because there was and continues to be a strong flow of resident feedback, which centers around the schools. And so it's nothing necessarily new, but it's just concerns around how we can make, you know, make that process, improve that process. And in talking to Dr. Byrne and the TPS, you know, we realized that a lot of this has to do with choices that community members are making and understanding the rules, you know, and understanding the traffic flow. And so there's been a lot of communication from our administrators, which is very, very helpful, you know, helping, especially even letting people know there's wide ranges of times you can drop off. Let's say in the morning, you don't have to just be at a school, you know, at 7:40 when you have to be there, but you could come 20 minutes before that. The doors are open. So just sort of getting that awareness out there. But it's been really amazing to see, we've talked about it before, but Dr. Byrne has been communicating so much with the city and with the police and the Rye Police Department. And this collaboration, even on the TPS committee was remarking that this is a new, it feels like a new step forward. And so just appreciating the time that's going into that. And the second meeting I wanted to highlight, which Chris could hop in if he wanted to as well, was our curriculum council, which was wonderful. As everyone knows, it's parents from the community, it's teachers, it's administrators, special education, representatives, PTO, you know, so many different groups coming to participate and listen. We had three really great presentations and one of the, which were wonderful. And Tricia's done a great job on just creating, you know, really improving from what I've heard from the past, the way curriculum is discussed. But Dr. Sassoon actually gave a wonderful presentation as well, focusing on one of the goals that we have for the board this year, which is increasing these pathways and talking about computer science and how we're going to improve the course offerings at the middle school, which we've only offered a couple of years, and sort of layering in more opportunities for those middle schoolers to have more pathways in high school. And it was a very exciting presentation. Only my second curriculum council, but I think I feel about curriculum council like Jane feels about policy. It's just great.
I will say curriculum council is definitely another one of my favorites.
It's really, but it was really a great evening.
You've pretty much covered it all. Again, I can, I can sit and bask in the enthusiasm as my job's getting easier and easier. No, they really are terrific. They're at terrific meetings. The breakdown into smaller groups to discuss with the teachers who are rebuilding classes is just, you can't touch it in terms of the ability to go back and forth with a group of eight, 10 people. It's fantastic.
Any other committee meetings? I don't think so that I'm aware of. No. Okay. So I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. So we just want to wish our entire faculty, staff, their families, students and their families and our whole community a very happy holiday and a very happy and healthy new year to come back to 2022. So our next meeting will be on July 11.
Jane, January 11.
I did it just like you!
You and Jan, but you're taking the break.
My break is six months long. January 11, where we will talk about the Rye Academy as well as
Well, actually, we're pushing the academy
We're pushing that again.
to the next meeting, and it's just going to be the capital project update.
Okay. So then capital project update.
So we can give the time
Right. Absolutely. No, I completely agree. Okay. Thank you very much.